Okay, good afternoon, residents of Dearborn Heights. My name is Joe Hashem. I'm the director of the Community and Economic Development Department. Today is our first public hearing. It's part of two-part process that is required by Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. This regulation is part of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. This is for the program year 2020-2021 Action Plan. Summary of all the proposals received will be presented at this public hearing. The CEDD, Community Economic Development Department, will prepare the fiscal year 2020-2021 Action Plan draft in coordination with the mayor and the city administration for public review and comments. Our second public hearing will be conducted in March 2020 to present the proposed action plan to the public and to accept comments at that point. Community and Economic Development Department will then present the action plan to the mayor and the city council for final approval and submission to HUD in May of 2020. This particular public hearing is divided into three different sections. I'm going to start with the first section, and I'm going to pass it on to grant coordinator Chris Klemchak, and then Chris is going to pass it on to Jason, who is our consultant The fiscal year 2020 annual action plan. The city's Community Development Block Grant Program Action Plan is an annual one-year plan that describes specifically how federal funds will be spent over the course of the upcoming program year. Projects are generated to accomplish the goals stated in the 2016-2020 five-year consolidated The city of Dearborn Heights fiscal year 2020 estimated community block grant allocation This is based on fiscal year 2019 formula allocation amount. The exact number is not given to us at this point. It will be announced by HUD at a later date for the fiscal year 2020. Program income received as of January 28, 2020 is $66,695. This amount is added to the previous number I mentioned, and this amount is used to calculate the 15% public service gap amount for fiscal year 2020. Now we're going to talk about the fiscal year 2020 action plan estimated funds available for allocation. The fiscal year 2020 estimated grant funds, again, this is an estimate, is $1,019,751. The estimated program income is $100,000, and the program income received as of January 28, 2020 is $66,695. We also have $9,475 of reprogramming income that's left over from unfinished or finished projects, left over from finished projects. That gives us an estimated funds available for fiscal year 2020 of $1,195,921. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Jason, who is our consultant from Waitram. He's going to talk about the national objective, the low-moderate income area, income limits tables. Jason, would you please?
Thank you, Director Hashem. Today, we are here to talk about community development block grant funds and how those will, the proposed allocation of those funds. Now, I'm going to provide you with some detail on some of the rules that are connected and what the funds that were received annually are used to benefit. So first thing is that any project that is funded through CDBG funds is required to meet a HUD national objective. The bottom line is that these funds should be used to benefit low and moderate income people, households, and areas. So before us today, I have a map that I'll go in a little more detail when we're talking about areas and what's required for us with CDBG funds in these specific areas within the city. Additionally, funding can be used to prevent or eliminate slums or blight, and these are things like demolition projects and so on. So when I talk about low and moderate income persons, I don't only mean individuals who make below a certain income. I also mean, and these are HUD definitions, abused children, elderly persons, battered spouses, people who are homeless, adults meeting the U.S. Census definition of severely disabled, illiterate adults, persons living with HIV/AIDS, and also migrant farm workers. And these are populations in addition to those who make below a certain income threshold that are also eligible for funding and eligible to participate in services and projects specific to CDBG funding. And as I mentioned earlier, low and moderate income areas, and so let's look at this a little bit in some more detail and understand what that means. So within the city of Dearborn Heights, an area is defined as low and moderate income if 51% or more of the population in that area is considered low and moderate income. So when we look at our map, which we have a large version here in front of us, and we also have some handouts on the table, we're looking at the dark blue areas throughout the city, the bluish-green color there on our map. Those are all census block groups that have a population of 51% or greater that are considered low and moderate income. And as you can see, it's scattered throughout the north and south portions of the city. So these are the areas that we look to conduct infrastructure projects, things like park projects that really benefit an area opposed to an individual household or individual person. So when we go through our vetting process for proposed projects, we have to first identify whether or not that project meets a national objective. Does it benefit low and moderate income people, households, or areas? So we will do that throughout this process, and some of the proposed projects that will be discussed tonight, we will go through that vetting process over the coming months. You've heard me say low and moderate income several times throughout my few minutes here. What does that mean within the city of Dearborn Heights? Well, HUD provides us annually with updated income limits. 80% of the area median income is considered to be low and moderate income. So for example, if you are a four-person household, $61,050 is considered the threshold for a, to be, $61,050 or less is considered low and moderate income. And that number floats depending on how large your household is. It could be, if you're a single person, $42,750, a two-person household, $48,850, and so on, and it ticks up there as you have more persons in your household. And these are updated annually, usually every spring by HUD. Now I'll pass it over to Chris Klemchak, grants coordinator, to discuss some of the action plan CDBG program proposals for funding for 2020.
Thank you, Jason. Just a reminder for anyone that might have stepped in a little later than five here for our hearing, the handouts are over here on the table to my right, and those are the low-mod maps and the presentation that we're giving this evening, so feel free to pick those up at any time. I'll be moving in now to the program proposals that we've received for funding for our fiscal year 2020 CDBG program. And again, these are just proposals that we've received. We're going to present those in the amounts, and this is not a budget that's written in stone. This is the very first preliminary process for the public hearing, and we're not, we're still developing the budget, and this is just to tell the public and to tell everyone what we've received and give a general idea on how the budget's going to develop. So the first thing is our planning and administration area of the budget. Now, that has a cap of 20%, which is calculated by the estimated allocation and the current year program income. Now, we've estimated that current year program income at $100,000. That'll be for fiscal year 2020, plus the number that Joe mentioned, the estimated allocation that's based on last year's funding of $1,019,751. And multiply that by 20%, and we get a cap amount of $223,950. That would be the planning and administration, the planning and administration funding to administer the block grant program. That's office, staff, all of the things necessary to administer this program during the fiscal year. Proposed funding that we've received, there's a couple categories, and one is the public improvement projects. We received, we have a proposal for our residential rehabilitation program. That's our funding that Jason mentioned, the income thresholds that we use to qualify eligible homeowners for our residential rehabilitation program. We're proposing $300,000 for fiscal year 2020. We've received a proposal for water main replacement, and that is along Joy Road in the Military Park area, and that's proposed for $250,000, which is part of the total budget. The remainder of that would be from the city funds, and we would propose $250,000 of CDBG towards that program project. Code enforcement undertaken by our Building Department and Ordnance Division proposed $100,000 for that project. Vista Maria facility improvements, that's public facility improvements on the Vista Maria campus here in Dearborn Heights. They submitted a proposal for $30,000. Another proposals for ongoing demolition program, we've been demolishing single-family structures that are dilapidated and provided by the city. They're in beyond rehabilitation, and they're slated for demolition, and we have proposed $50,000 for that in the upcoming fiscal year 2020. And the other public improvement project proposal we received is for Van Houten Park Play Structure, and there's a proposal for $200,000 of CDBG to go into that project. So these are proposed, again, not a budget written in stone, and that's a total of $930,000 in proposed CDBG funding for public improvement projects. The next area of funding is public services programs, and we use a cap formula again for that. We're capped at 15% for public services programs, and that is the current year estimated allocation of $1,019,751 again, plus the program income we've received in the prior year, which this is what we're in now, fiscal year 19, which is the year prior to the proposed 2020 year, and that is the $66,695 figure that Joe mentioned earlier. And that added together, multiplied by 15%, gives us a current estimated proposed cap of $162,966. So that is the maximum amount we can use for public services programs under the CDBG. And we have received some proposed proposals for fiscal year 2020 from a number of public service agencies or entities within the city, city departments, to fund projects that are under that cap. And one of those is our senior services, which are the funding that's proposed to help operate our senior citizen centers, Berwin and Eaton Centers. And there's been a proposal submitted for $100,000 towards that project. Crime prevention, which is undertaken by our Dearborn Heights Police Department, and their proposal is at $120,000 for crime prevention activities that would benefit our limited clientele residents and our low-mod area residents, which is what Jason touched on before as far as benefiting the low-mod population. We had a proposal from the Fair Housing Center of Metro Detroit, and that was for $6,000. They provide a report every year, and they investigate complaints and do things very important in the fair housing realm, and that's a very important component of our CDBG program is fair housing. Leaders Advancing and Helping Communities, LAHC, submitted another proposal again for this year, and that proposal was for $16,734, and they assist with drug rehabilitation and things like that in schools and education in the area. Salvation Army here in Dearborn Heights, they have a citadel here in Dearborn Heights. They submitted a proposal for $8,500. I believe that was for assistance programs like utilities assistance or whatever that they perform. And also, the last one we received for this year was Wayne Metro Community Action Agency. They're an agency that does a lot, again, of public service programs and assistance for individuals and groups, so they submitted a proposal of $15,000. So when we add all of these proposals together, that is total of $266,234. And as I mentioned previously, our cap amount is at $162,966. So our proposals normally exceed what funding is going to be available, so that's when we have to go into the caps and our budget available and determine a budget where we can fund as many viable projects and programs as we can. But obviously, we only have a certain amount, the old cliche, there's a pie, and we have to slice it and make sure that that pie does, obviously doesn't exceed, and we can only have so much to fund. So again, the summary of our proposals this year for fiscal year, upcoming year fiscal year 2020, again, I should mention real briefly, that begins July 1 of 2020 and will go until June 30 of 2021. That is our CDBG program year, fiscal year. Again, just a quick review, the planning admin amount is capped at $223,950. The public improvement project proposals that we've received is a total of $930,000. There's no cap on that, but obviously, we can't fund more than we have available. The public services programs are capped again at $162,966, and we've received proposals totaling $266,234. So our total proposed projects come to $1,420,184. Our estimated total available 2020 funding is $11,95,921. So again, as you can see, we've received proposals in excess of our available estimated funding over about, you know, $2,000 to $3,000 over, so. Okay, well, that's our summary of our proposals. Thank you for your attention. I'm going to hand it back to Joe Hashem, our director, and he's going to follow up and conclude with some other statistics and move us into the public comment period.
Thank you, Chris. I just want to mention, just a quick comment, the caps that Chris talked about, those are not caps that we put on, on the block grant. Those caps are basically a requirement by HUD, so it's not like we choose 15% and 20%. We're obligated to follow those caps and stay within those caps. Just a quick comment. One of the things that I started doing when I came here to the city of Dearborn Heights is basically totaling what we have done in the last five years, and we have worked very good with our administration and with the city council, and we'd like to show them what we have done in the last four years. So when I look at 2016 to 2019, we have projected $1,174,000 for residential rehabilitation. The number of homes that we have remodeled at this point is 34 homes in the last four years. Water replacement, we spent $775,000, and that helped about 9,770 households. Code enforcement, we spent about $350,000, $50,000, and that helped 32,114 addresses. In the senior services, we spent $422,000 to help about 38,454 senior citizens in the great city of Dearborn Heights. Crime prevention, received $200,000, and they helped about 10,240 people in our city. So the total money that we spent in the last three years is $2,921,122, and it helped about 90,000 individuals. Some of them are repetitive, obviously, because they do overlap a little bit. What's next for us here at CDBG? The next step that we will take is basically hold our next public hearing, which will be in March 2020. At that point, we will meet with the administration. We will go through the numbers because we have to balance this particular budget, and we have, after our public hearing, we have a 30-day public comment that we will put on our website, and hopefully, in May of 2020, we will come back to the administration and the city council to adopt a budget that we have proposed. The participation of the residents and the department heads and the council is very well appreciated. We will take any comments or any questions, and we will be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. Pretty much, that concludes our presentation. We'll just move on to the Q and A right now. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to address those. If I don't have the answer, I'll pass it on to my right-hand man, Chris Klemchak, who is our grant coordinator, or Jason, who is our consultant. Any questions, councilman? Of anybody, sure.
Hello. So I've got a question for you. So some of these organizations that you guys give money to, and they're all, you know, I guess I have to introduce myself, Dave Abdallah, resident of Dearborn Heights, Cabree Lane. Some of these organizations that you guys give money to, what is the criteria that you use to determine which organization gets what, how much, and how consistently? In other words, hypothetically, you approve Organization A, does that organization automatically, because I've been told that, and I didn't think that was the case, does that organization automatically get continuous funding every single year because they've been approved day one? And the second part of my question is, it's a two-point, like, what is the criteria and who's the decision-makers to determine what amounts go to which organizations? Now, all the organizations you mentioned, I should mention, as a resident, they're all very viable organizations, great organizations that do great things in the city, but I'd like to answer that for you, Mike.
Well, the first question is, do they automatically get renewed or get the same amount of money? That is not correct. Every year in September, I believe, we send out our notice, a notice of funds availability, and they have to go through the whole process all over again. And I can see some of the organization members are here, and they have to fill out the application every single year, and that's just not for us, that's for every city that's involved with the block grant. They fill out the application, and they send it to us. We look at our numbers. We work very closely with the administration. We come up with our budget, we work with the administration, specifically the mayor at this point, and we will talk to him, and we have to balance our budget. So we look at what these organizations do, we look at the impact. We literally have to go do site, what do we call it? Site inspection. We look at, we look at their numbers, they show us that they keep track. When I mentioned all these households, and we mentioned all these numbers that ordinance does or the police department, they serve in the low-to-moderate income area, all of those numbers, they have to be tracked, so we have to go visit them, we have to make sure that they are tracking the numbers correctly, and that will be a plus, obviously, when we look at them the following year. In the past, we've had organizations that did not do that, and therefore, we pretty much did not want to allocate money to them. But ultimately, the main decision is, we come up with a plan, we bring it to the administration, which is the mayor at that, at this point, and we work together to come up with a budget, and we bring it to city council, who eventually have the final vote on it, to approve it, adopt it, and send it to the government or the federal government.
Oh, I'm sorry, also, Joe, we have our internal process, which we'll enter to after this, is we, it's a component of evaluation, and it's basically like a point system or an internal evaluation where we take all the proposals, and Joe and I and staff will sit down and we'll, we rank them and evaluate them, and on past performance, on current performance, some of it could be considered maybe a risk analysis, which we are also under from HUD for our program, but that determines too the course of funding that we'll recommend as well. And Jason may touch on it too, with our five-year plan, priority needs and things also have to fit in to our five-year plan and the priority needs and goals of our action plan. So that is all kind of works together in concert to determine funding.
Yeah, thank you. I missed that.
Is there any type of funding, and I don't know if this meets the criteria or not, and I'm glad you're doing something at Van Houten Park, I mean, that's nice. You know, we need, obviously, as balanced out as you can, this is something the administration does, and this is something I'm glad you guys are doing as balanced as we can with the two sides of the city. I really resent a lot of times where people feel there's, you know, bias towards north, south, et cetera. I just, I just feel that we should be, as an administration, as balanced as possible, as a city, I should say. But do you have anything, that being the case, do you have anything possibly either allocated or considered towards, and I don't know if we can, on a small version, the Van Born corridor, doing some sort of improvement along that route, because I know that's something that the two cities, us and Taylor, are talking about, but even more important than that, with the Ekor's Creek situation, which I do realize that's not something, you know, especially with the amount of funding there, there's very little dent that you could do, but every little bit helps. Is that, because of the continuous problem we've had there, is that something that you think could be considered for some sort of help with, you know, residents there?
Again, councilman, all we're doing today is basically going through the proposals that we have received. So the administration, along with Parks and Recreation, got together and said, we want you to look at the Van Houten Park, because it does fall right in the middle of the low-moderate income area. So when we looked at it at first, it's a feasible project. That doesn't mean it's going to go through, it's just something that we have to vet out at this point, and we have to do a lot of, a lot of work.
I'm in favor of it.
Yes, so no, we can. As far as certain other areas, we did run into trouble when we tried to vet these programs. You mentioned the Van Born areas. It's really very, even though you might think it's a low-mod area, if you look at the map, there's only a very small strip right there. So literally, you have to stay within those boundaries.
Is most of the Ekor's Creek, I'm trying to see here in the map, it looks like...
With the Ekor's Creek, I think, and I mentioned that quite a few times at council meetings when I talked as a director, is we have the rehabilitation program, which we have $300,000 in it for the next fiscal year. That money is available for everybody that needs help getting furnaces done, getting their roofs done, or fixing their property. So that money's always been available, not just for the creek area, but for any area, and it's income-driven, so it depends on what your income that Jason touched on.
So where I was going with that is a possibility, and I don't know, this was just me sitting here thinking out loud, you would not, with the amount of funding that you have available, obviously, you're going to make very little dent in, you know, it's obviously a huge problem with large financial need, but if you were to possibly, and I'm just throwing it out there for you guys to consider, maybe hire some sort of a grant writer, something that can get federal funding that can help the residents in that area. I mean, every time I see that on TV, it just, you know, and again, I don't know if you can or not, but I'm just throwing it out there. If you can, it'd be, I think it'd be a great thing for our city.
And I have met with the mayor on various, various occasions. I think in the last meeting we've had, as we talked about looking for various grants up there, out there.
You need a good grant writer, obviously, to do that.
Yeah, that's something I believe that the administration is working on with the Army Corps of Engineers, so I, I'm not going to touch on that. But the money that we received, the 1.2 million, or 1.1 million, let's call it at this point, does have to meet the, have to follow the five-year action plan, so we cannot spend it literally on one particular thing. We have to follow the five-year plan that we set in place. Now, in 2021, we will be working... Now, in 2021, we will be working on the five-year, next five-year plan, which will be 2021 to 2026, and also has to follow the national objectives of HUD. So when we set that plan, we can go forward with that. Again, as far as the creek, I won't get much into that, I don't think the money that we have can do a dent in there, but I believe...
No, I agree, I was talking about getting a person in charge.
I have struck at Chris, actually, after I have talked to the mayor, that...
If I might, I don't know if I need a mic or not, but on the Ekor's Creek project, we're beyond a grant, actually. We're at the point, and the two Congresswomen are having a meeting in mid-February, it's really where the Army Corps of Engineers has studied it, come up with a proposal, so we already have, we're beyond the grant. The key is getting it funded, and that's where the two Congresswomen have got to go to work and get that funding, because we don't, we need that pressure then, but the grant has already been through the great benefit of Senator Carl Levin. He got the money, the Army Corps studied the treaty, came up with a proposal, and now it's really up to Congress and the President to fund it, and that's where we need their help. It's a $235 million project, and so this would not, and the other problem is, as Joe has mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, Governor, but it won't meet the criteria of the five-year and the goals of the plan, because this is really a housing project, is basically what it is, and while the flooding of the homes, but we're better off going towards what we did with the Army Corps to get the solution rather than using this particular program, but it's a good thought.
Okay. We do, we do have to follow the five-year plan that we set and we sent to the federal government at one point, and therefore, the money has to be spread out, and that's why we give some to this organization, we give some to other organizations and various departments and what have you, because all of that money is supposed to help the low to moderate income areas.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you, councilman.
Good job, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, at this point, I would like to conclude the meeting, and I'd like to thank everybody. I'd like to thank the mayor for being present, Councilman Dave and Steve, thank you very much for showing up, and if you have any questions, our telephone number is 313-791-3500. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.